Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order and prayer with Steve Ayers, Lifeline Connect Church.
Let's pray. Lord, again, we just thank you. We thank you for the opportunities that you put across our path. Lord, I pray that you give us wisdom and guidances to follow those opportunities. Lord, I continue to pray for the men and women that serve our village, and Lord, I pray for wisdom for them also. We just thank you for the opportunities. We thank you for your love and your grace. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Let's do the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, want to welcome everybody. Happy Juneteenth. I guess that's how you say it. Have ready for the roll call.
Bassett?
Here.
Beverly?
Yes.
Egley?
Here.
Klepper?
Here.
Head before you the minutes of the last meeting on June the 6th. Any additions, corrections?
Just because we can, on the administrator's report, Cheryl, you've got talked about Arthur in Maine, selling Arthur in Maine and the strip land at the park, but actually, we discussed mostly the 20 acres. And when we did touch on the park, you informed us that nobody really knew who owned it, so we said, okay, well, we'll drop that. So I'd just take that out if I was...
But we did talk about it.
So did we talk about a little bit?
We did talk about it.
It's long enough that she said that nobody knew who owned it, so...
I can motion to approve Hazren.
Second?
I'll second him.
Roll call.
Egley?
Yes.
Klepper?
Abstain.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Sure.
Yeah, before you the bills. Any questions?
Cheryl, can you refresh my memory? What is the $227,000 to Ohio Water Development Authority?
Those are our three loans that are listed there.
Okay, all right. And probably nobody here can really have a good answer. But I see we spent another $14,000 for radio reads, and I thought Jesse said she was about done with that.
I don't know.
She was getting close to being done, last time I remember, too.
Yeah.
I don't know how many that got her, 14,000. Was that budgeted?
Yeah, she says a 20,000 right now, out before this 14. So she's almost done. Well, she's done, but...
And then, on the second page, Pogomire Design Group, water treatment plant valve replacement. Why do we need an engineer to tell us how to change a valve?
That I don't know, but it's part of his contract. His contract is like 14.5 total.
We've got state money for that, so you have to have an engineer.
We got money to change a valve?
Who's the one?
CDG money.
Probably that one that was kind of a little high-techy, but...
Well, I believe that contract to do that was above the 50,000, and so they basically administered the engineering bids and all that stuff also.
Okay.
So I, that's how I recall, but that's all I can speak into that.
Okay, kids, that's all I got.
Amen.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Egley?
Yes.
Um, Klepper?
Yes.
Park Board met June the 15th. No minutes, but that was their agenda. If anybody, anybody write minutes for that?
We lost our secretary.
Oh, okay. That was, who was that?
Uh, Mike Altman.
Okay.
He's gonna need to be replaced.
Yeah, okay. Okay, moving along. Streetlight Property Committee met June 9th. Minutes were in the packets. Was that you, Ron?
Mm-hmm. Any questions?
Any updates?
I talked with Jerry Ely and Ritter Cox today with Schrader. Jerry just now got the plot maps that I had sent to Ritter. He's taken a look at them. He was almost on his, he was almost in Hicksville when I called him, and going to a meeting in Bryan, and he was gonna drive out there, take a peek. I also drove out there and took a peek. We need to mow that place.
It's in the works.
And we really shouldn't, are they gonna mow the well field, too?
No, that's just on LaBarre Drive.
You should mow the well field if you got somebody to do it, because you're not gonna be able to see stakes or nothing out there.
It's gonna be tough to get somebody to mow that, since it hasn't been worked since it was plowed.
Yeah, chisel plowed, it's rough.
When we were walking out there for the trail...
Hold her up!
I understand, it's gonna be a rough ride, but I know that was something I mentioned last week. I don't know if it got discussed about disking, getting that.
There's an international tractor and disc sitting there.
Yeah, and I'm not, it's been there for two weeks, so I'm not sure.
I didn't know whose that was, or what the, I was hoping to get an update today, but...
Yeah, it's good.
So, well, then the continuation or the end of my conversation is Jerry is kind of over the whole thing. Ritter is who I know and is working with. Jerry is the one that sets everything up. And in speaking with him, he wants to do, he's got some very close friends that do developments and stuff. He wants to kind of bounce it off of them, get some feel for it, and he wants to be able to, if he comes over here, he wants to be able to do us a good job for what he's planning to charge us.
Have we, I mean, have we, has Erica said anything, or have we heard anything from Erica since everything fell through?
I had a meeting with her last Thursday, and I didn't discuss that. We were discussing other things.
But she didn't bring it up either, right?
She what?
She didn't bring it up either. No.
I can make a call tomorrow.
So that's pretty much it with who I spoke with and what we discussed briefly. And then the first of coming Tuesday or Wednesday of next week, he'll get back with me. And he wants to set a date to come over and meet with whoever's gonna be here. And I know I want committee and Cory and possibly you there, if you have the time, and we'll sit down and chat. And maybe take the, hopefully maybe the weeds can be down again, and we can take a drive out. That's all I got.
Police and Fire Committee met June 13th. No minutes were given.
I forgot the minutes later this afternoon. I can either email them to all of you or I can put them in the packet next time.
I can present on that, if you'd like me to.
Sure.
Charlie had sent me out an email stating that he would not be here. It was a pretty lengthy meeting. It was about two and a half hours long, so I will just shorten it up for you guys. We did meet that day. The discussion was filling that open officer position. Chief Denning has a desire to fill that with a lieutenant position. He shared with us that that position has existed in the past and just currently is not filled, so we wouldn't have to approve the position. As a committee, we agreed that if that's the direction he would like to go, that we were okay with it, pending that he meets with Cheryl to discuss that he can fit it into his current budget. He also shared that his five-year plan for a K-9 is currently on hold. There's many factors that went into that, including training and just costs, were kind of the main. We also heard from Chief Kramer. He expressed some of his concerns and goals for his department. He would love to see more continuing education and more volunteers within his department. And as a committee, we agreed that we would kind of look at, you know, what that looked like, whether, you know, we look into paying out for continuing education and how we can, you know, get more numbers for the department. Finally, as a committee, we expressed to both Chief Denning and Chief Kramer our desire for them to do annual reviews to help out with some performance concerns within the departments. We heard several different concerns, and we just think that if he can keep some information up on that, it would really help to be able to address it at a later time. We also suggested that we get to meet the men and women who are serving these departments. We'd love to invite them up to council, as well as maybe displaying their pictures up here for the rest of the community to come and see them, and see their faces. And then we concluded by agreeing to check in with them in a couple months, see where they're at and what other concerns they might have.
Thanks, Tony. Any questions for her?
Is Kramer was gonna do some different things to stimulate getting younger people involved? Is he doing anything with that?
He discussed some of it. Whether it's younger people, I don't know. I don't know how much he's doing. He's actually going through some continuing education himself, so I think he was kind of hoping to get through that before he kind of really spearheaded any other projects. Part of that continuing education means that he could potentially hold classes here. Unfortunately, all the money that he would generate from that would have to go back to, I believe he said, Bryan, is where he's out of. But still, if you could have something like that available, where people wouldn't have to travel and they could still do the classes. But yeah, I mean, we talked about some different ideas.
He talked a couple different times about, you know, maybe going out to the school and put on reprogram or something.
Yes, yes.
If that's ever transpired.
Yeah. I think he said he had done it in the past, and it didn't generate much interest. Because that was something that I had brought up also, about, you know, reaching out to the younger people, but it has not gotten much interest.
Tell them too much, but it can't be a one-shot deal. It's, you know, you're gonna have to continually talk to those kids, if you're going after the school kids, and instill it in them that, hey, this is the route to take, or it's an opportunity for you to take. With just one time saying, hey, this is what we've got, you ought to try it. You need to push them along.
Okay, any other questions for Tony? Who else was on that committee with you?
Uh, Mike.
Oh, Mike. So you're the only one here, so...
Yeah, Mike's chair of the committee. Charlie took the next one. It's a 9 percent.
Thanks for showing up.
Okay. Any other council committee reports that we don't have? Administrator report, he's not here. He's coaching, or a little pee-wee-ly, so you got the list. Any questions on those? No questions, okay. Solicitors report, Troy's not here, so I'll, first reading of ordinance 2022-07, authorizing fiscal officer transfer funds from the general fund to capital projects fund. And we don't have enough here to make an emergency, so...
What is that for specifically?
It's going for the two water projects we're doing this year, because both of them are reimbursable. I have to pay them upfront, so...
What'd you say, reimbursable? So we have grants coming?
They're reimbursable grants. We don't get the money until...
Until we spend?
Asked for, yeah.
Okay. So that wasn't shifted in capital projects initially for this year's budget?
It's just an ordinary one that we send over there every year for whatever project we're working on.
Okay, so but we didn't allocate it to capital, we didn't move that? For this year's budget?
She said we're fine.
So I guess why do we, why do we have legislation to move it again, I guess?
We put it in the budget, and that was approved, because...
We just hadn't moved the money at that point?
Right. So when we agreed to move it, then we have to have a resolution giving permission.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Good question, though. Department has police chief, I don't see, no. Fire, Bruce?
We got nothing tonight.
Not gonna jinx yourself?
Yeah.
Not gonna jinx yourself?
You said it was kind of slow, and then your tone went off two months ago.
Yeah.
I don't even remember what it was.
Any questions for Bruce? Okay, park director, Lindsay?
Well, I'm just gonna say...
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's been super busy at the pool with all the hot weather, but everything's going good.
So it's been full on the hot days. Do they still do, if it gets up to 90, there's no charge, so that's good.
Then we have camps going on down there that get in.
Okay. Okay, Lindsay, you...
Need to do anything?
Yeah. Part of the park.
All right, guys, I have a lot to unpack here, so I figured the best thing I can do is lay it all out. You can maybe take some notes and then hit me when it's done. Does that sound okay with everybody? Okay, so I want to talk to you about the proposed trail, splash pad, and the status of our pool. There's a foundation in here in Hicksville that has been meeting, and we just look at the park as the heart of Hicksville, and we have a vision to kind of overhaul the whole thing. I'd like to start with the vision for the trail, the trail inside the park. If you'll give me a second, I want to just tell you a quick story. There's a man that was a councilman here in Hicksville that, when he was 16, forged his papers, enlisted into the Marine Corps, was stationed in Guam, and two days after Pearl Harbor hit, he was taken as a prisoner of war. Of the 400 taken, 390 were sent on a hell ship to Japan, and he was one of 10 that was sent to the baton death march, where he survived, was shrapnel in a shoulder, was sent on another hell ship to a POW camp. If you've seen the movie Unbreakable about Louis Empernelli, he was at that camp, but he had even worse. Out of the 3,000 prisoners at that camp, him and 79 other men that were referred to as the 80 thieves, were put in a torture camp, where over eight months, only 36 survived. This man was so beaten and so tortured that his teeth were knocked out of his face, his hands were beaten. When he worked at Johns Mansville, one of the grandkids of somebody who used to work with him came up to me and said, "Bob Thiel used to be able to take his hand like this, grab a molten jar, and clean it out. There was so much nerve damage." He then petitioned the senators, asked for them to overturn his medical release, fought in the Korean War where he was shot, came back to this town. Oh, when he was in Japan, and he was one of the 36 that survived the torture camp, nobody came and rescued them. They picked up the arms of the Japanese guards that left, and they commandeered or hijacked a train and took themselves to safety. He came back to this town, and he became a councilman, and then he toured all the Ivy Leagues and gave speeches. He just happens to be my grandfather, but his story belongs to Hicksville and belongs to all of us. He's not the only hero in this town, and those stories are dying. They're so important, and they're dying. So what we'd like to do is look at the, the trail committee would like to do is look at the Veterans Memorial Trail, start the trail ahead there, and then tell these stories of our brave citizens along the path. So there's that part. Splash pad, as you know, we have a large donor that came forth that would like to kind of spearhead towards the splash pad. I know that we've talked at different locations. And Friday, we finally pinned one down, and that's directly adjacent to the pool. Now, while we were looking at the pool, we all went back and forth. Val and Gary have kept that alive through hard work, and I say spit and bubble gum. Well, they said there's a liner in it now, and they said it's not if, it's when, when it goes out. And we were kind of going back and forth about, well, we keep throwing good money after bad. Would the best spot be to fill the pool and put the splash pad there? But as we saw those smiling faces jumping in that pool, we can't take that away from this community, but it needs redone. So we'd like to do a splash pad and a new pool. And this is all through the foundation. As of right now, we're not asking the village for anything but to move the volleyball courts. To some of you, it might seem crazy trying to do this in this, in today's economy. I would tend to agree. The thing that sets that apart is post-COVID, there is so much grant money out there for quality of life and get-out-and-exercise initiatives, and they're going to three things: trail systems, pools, and splash pads for communities. So what we did is we decided, instead of having all three projects separated, we're gonna throw them under one umbrella, just a park vision committee, a park vision board. We decided we needed one person to spearhead that campaign. I'm so happy to announce that Dick Altman said that he would do that. I mean, just the legalese alum that he has, and there's nobody, I don't think, in town that loves that park more than Mr. Altman does. What we need to do to present to the community is we need an overhead of what the whole entire vision is going to look like. The foundation is going to be footing that bill, obviously, to get an engineer and an architect in for drawings, and we're hoping to have those very soon. We're meeting Thursday night to talk about where to go from there as far as an architect and an engineer. And when Taylor and I had met for the trail, and you'd spoke to the commissioners, they had said one thing on the trails, that you would like to see an architectural drawing or an engineer drawing. So we're just gonna try to do them all in one, on how to accomplish these. I think I talked a little bit about payment on the trail side. The Metropolitan Park Board, as many of you know, own 2.2 acres on what we call the softball side. They get $50,000 a year to go towards Ney Park, the 2.2 acres we have in Pontia Park, and out of that, we get $2,000. So not even enough to run our mowers. And they meet four times a year. The biggest issue we can see with trying to run this trail and try to tell these hero stories is it's hard to get grant money for lands that you don't own. And you have to go to them every time, and then sometimes that brings red tape in, where maybe we could have asked for forgiveness instead of permission by having volunteers come excavate and do some things. So I've spoken to two of you up there, Mary Jones and Mr. Klepper, and we were working on drafting a letter to the Metropolitan Park Board, laying out our vision, and asking them basically, what's your hold on 2.2 acres? Is there any way you could give that back if, or let us buy it back? I mean, gift would be the way to go. I said move the volleyball courts. The purpose for today is really a call to action to the community, to tell the community about this vision, and to ask for the veterans' trails. Are there any historians? Are there anybody that know these veterans that could help us tell these stories or have ideas? One thought was, it doesn't have to be all hero stories. Like my dad, he was stationed in Alaska in the Army, just say, a little brick, like had the Huber, that says their names, and how neat that would be, be along the trail, and there's things that can be added to. Are there any grant writers that would be willing to volunteer their time? I know that there are people that worked grant writing for the field house at the school. Would those people be willing to step forward and help out? And obviously, are there any donors? So like I said, we are meeting Thursday to talk about the hiring of an architect and engineer and to really listen to what Dick's thoughts are on that. And what we're asking for you is to just give us our blessing to move forward. And coming forward, when we do need things, instead of being told why we can't do things, we would just really like it if you guys would help us figure out how it can be done. So are there any questions?
Your trail, does all that trail from start to end all have to be on village property?
What do you mean by that?
Like you were talking about seeing if the metro would possibly donate?
That's the way it's laid out now. It's laid out as circular around the whole perimeter of the park.
The way it's laid out now, it does cross metro park board.
Would cross the school, too, because it doesn't get that from villagers, too?
Correct. It would go onto school property, as it sits currently, I believe.
Yeah, is all that property between there is all school?
The plan, so when we were talking with Dick initially, and I may be wrong, it sounds like lots has changed since I've been involved, but the drafting, like perpetual easement, like perpetual use easement, and if that easement's in place, basically for the strip of whatever the trail is.
Just where they have all the practice football fields, you know?
Yeah, no.
No, it doesn't.
It would interfere with those things.
It does not go near where they practice at all.
No, basically, it's just...
I just was asking about it all being village-owned property, because there's no connecting the village-owned property on Arthur Street and the village-owned property on, or metro property on North Bryan Street. There's nothing connecting those two. The school owns everything in between there.
Yeah, there, it would, there would be perpetual use easements. That would be required, and it would be clear.
It'd be school-approved and everything.
Yeah, everything would have. There's still, obviously, there's still a lot of hurdles to jump with all of that. But yeah, it would cross some school property.
But Eric, nothing would go through their practice, nothing would interrupt where the football players practice or softball players...
I'm saying, like, they get that easement, everything, you'd have to have school board approval before you just...
Right, and we understand that.
Is there any thoughts on, like, the pool itself? I know it's a lot to be taken on, all that, to not ask for anything. I know at different times, there was talk about possibly having a levy for a pool. And if the village wants a new levy, or wants a new pool, the residents, you give it up to tax voters to vote on that, and if they vote yes, then you get a new one. And if you don't, I mean, $51,000, something like that for new liner? A lot cheaper than a couple million for a new pool.
I'm not, I'm not gonna lie to you, the levy was mentioned. The committee's still kind of up in the air on whether this is the right time in our country physically to ask people to raise their tax dollars. Eric, you speak about it'd be a lot easier to throw a new liner in there, but if we're gonna do it, we want it done right. And that pool was built when Eisenhower was in office, and it has served its purpose, and the vision is for something a lot bigger and a lot more beautiful. So if this committee can find a way through grants, raising private funds, then I say give us a shot to do it, so... We just don't want to see good money thrown after bad over and over again, when there's a shot to redo the whole thing. And another thing is, I think we just need to, it's, obviously, this is all in its infancy, but we would need the community to realize that this would require the pool to be shut down for a year. This is gonna require the park to be tore up for a little bit. There will learn more as the architect and the engineer comes in, into play, and as the money situation comes into play. Could this be a one-shot, do it all at once and get it done? I mean, that's the dream. Is that reality? Maybe not. Could it be phased? Could it be splash pad work on the trail, the kids have somewhere where the pool's shut down to try to splash around the splash pad while the pool's being, new pool's being constructed? That's an option out there, too. That's all gonna come back to what the engineer, the engineer could come back and say, you're gonna save a lot of money by shutting it down and doing it all once, or you could phase it, and those just are, I just don't have the answers to those questions yet, so...
Who are you talking with, as far as an engineering standpoint goes?
I know Kurt Collins reached out to Choice One, and he didn't, I don't think he had a very good conversation with him. I'm not saying, but Dick Altman had, oh geez, I always mess it up, Taylor. Starts with a P.
Pogomire.
Pogomire. So that, I think that's, that's the direction we're gonna try to talk to it. And that's another thing. If any of you or people in the community have engineers that you recommend, you are my, we set a meeting for 8 o'clock at Jim Schmidt's Thursday night, if you can make it, so I figured you'd be our liaison to...
You know, some of these bigger professional pool people, some of these bigger professional pool people, installers, they'll, they'll make you a, they'll draw you, they'll make you a drawing of the whole thing.
Yeah, we have that with Vortex. Vortex did that with the splash pad run. And I think, I get what you're saying, and we're gonna see about the pool. We're really looking at somebody that can do an overhead drawing, that we can present to the community, that this is what the, this is what the park will look like, and then also have the engineering input. And I don't want to speak out of turn here, because I'll know more probably Thursday, but the foundation wanted me to come and present this to the public.
The only reason I'm asking, that I'm adding this, is things will change. You're so, you're so young in going into this, and not you, but...
I'm young.
You're young, but your movement is so young going into this, that things, things will change.
Right.
So many times, and every time that an architect or an engineer draws something, you pay.
Well, I think that's up to the foundation to figure out, you know, there...
I'm not telling you to do it, I'm just trying to help you.
Yeah, I get what you're saying. I think the most, we decided as a committee that the most important thing to do is to come up with a, basically, an overhead drawing, and hopefully not too rudimentary, that we can present to the public. And the fact is, is Hicksville's a beautiful community, or a thriving community. It always amazes me to go to our neighboring small towns and compare what Hicksville looks like, and it gives, fills me with such a sense... It gives, fills me with such a sense of pride. But balls played at that park three months a year. We don't have a golf course, we don't have a bowling, there's really not a whole lot to do in town. So if there's a foundation that's coming forward that's saying let's, that trail, I always say two to 102 can use the trail. The splash pad's probably about 11 years old, and then the pool, however. So if we have a foundation that's really willing to put the work in and show a vision, then we just ask that you work with us, and we ask the community for all the support.
Yeah, I met with the committee out last Friday, and I said the first thing, get it out in the open, what we're gonna do, what they wanna do. So they're just asking for the council's kind of blessing to move on. Anybody?
Any regards to, you guys were just talking about that pool and and $51,000 is cheaper than a couple million and and this is just from my experience, I'm not telling anybody what to do. I dug, I had, I put a machine down in the bottom of that thing, and I dug from the deepest end where the drain is, and I dug it all the way up to the front. Saw cut everything, dug it all out, and that concrete, concrete has a lifetime. Concrete doesn't last forever. You could've took that out by hand, a really good hand, but you could've took it out by hand. But that concrete is just so old and been wet so many times, and that pool needs to go.
So the current vision that you guys have, if you did the pool and the splash pad, would it be connected? What are you guys thinking? Or they'd be two separate things?
Sure, so we actually spoke about that at length, Tony. And the first thought was, well, we wanted the splash pad to be free, but then you pay for the, but then you pay for the pool. And then the thought came back that a kid hurts himself at the splash pad, they're gonna run to the lifeguard at the pool. So we're looking at the best ways to have the splash pad completely adjacent to the pool, fence it all in and have a low minimal charge and passes to get in to both. The committee went to Delphus, Ohio, and saw how theirs was done, and they really liked that. So hopefully, once again, when they get renderings, that'll give you a better.
Is there's design that way, where the splash pad is incorporated and it's a paid thing? Because I know, you know, in the area, obviously, almost all the splash pads in the area within, you know, 20, 30 minutes are all free.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's just something to consider.
The difference, Tony, I don't mean to cut you off, is a lot of the splash pads that are in there free aren't connected or right beside a pool.
Correct, correct. That's their only.
We were just thinking, as moms and grandmas in the community, we're kinda thinking of, you have a littles, and then you have an 11 or 12-year-old, and this one has to pay, but these are outside the fence. And it just, it doesn't, it really isn't conducive to the vision that we have. And also, if it's all in a fenced-in area, it's a way to, it's a way to keep kids that are messing around out. So if that makes sense.
Also, when you guys initially talked to us, you talked about, you know, wanting to break ground in the spring. I mean, obviously, your date has changed as your project grows. Do you have an idea of when you'd like to see this? I mean, dream big, right?
Right, not necessarily. I think the thought is to still hope, still hope to break ground in the spring. Once again, whether that's all at once or phased, that'll depend on grant money's donations and what the commissioners decide to, bless us, what's to talk to your dad. I'm just kidding.
At one time, we had a pool contingency back in '08. Perked a lot of money there, a couple hundred thousand during the bad economic times. It got us through. We didn't have to lay off. I think we cut the hours. So there was money for the future, but it got us through a bad time, so we gotta start over again.
And that's why, once again, just being totally transparent for the public, that's why as much as we would appreciate anything that the council could approve monetarily-wise to throw at us, the vision for this is to put everything into a 501(c)(3) and keep it separate so that it's in a lockbox and it can't, it can't be touched for anything outside of its goal.
Well, the finance committee can look at that in August or October?
Your big thing's gonna be understanding how the finances work. Because if there's public money, whether it's grants or anything, the entire thing has to go prevailing wage. It's gotta be a public project. So the original vision was for it to be privately funded. And that doesn't, that's not an option if public money's involved.
Right, and we spoke about that today at a small meeting I had with some of the foundation members today. And it's basically seeing, at this point, seeing what's out there. Because as far as prevailing wage, and Dick will speak more about this Thursday, I don't wanna speak for him. But there's ways to section that off, so you might have one whole project, right? But we might, we might use more donor, donor money for the, for the pool, this splash pad. And we might use most of the grant money, monies for the trail, and that would be more of a prevailing wage issue. Another thought they had is, yes, you might have to pay prevailing wage, but if you get $3 million in grants and you have to pay prevailing wage, and you're offsetting that with $750,000 in donations and not paying prevailing wages. So this is all things that we're open to and we're trying to learn about, and we're just keeping our options open.
If those projects are combined, they are a project, a project. You cannot have money here and grant money here and not use prevailing wage. That's called piecemeal, and they don't allow it.
They have to operate as completely separate projects.
Yes, as individual.
Correct.
That's what it would be, would be separate projects.
Not if they're combined.
It has to be, you have to be, there's, there's some thin lines involved there.
I don't think I'm communicating myself properly.
I guess just, it's a kind of a cart before the horse thing. Because at this point, you know, you're talking $4 million if you're talking to pool, splash pad, and trail at least.
Easily.
Yeah, easy.
Easy, so.
And we discussed that.
Yeah, so that's gonna be, there's, there's gonna be a few more meetings.
Right, when you speak about piecemeal, I guess I'm not communicating properly what I'm saying. When we say one vision and one, and one, right? That's to get a drawing to show the town. This is what the little trail's gonna look like. Here's trees, here's benches, here's flowers, here's veterans memorials, here's the splash pad, here's little renderings, right? That's to present to the village. It's all one committee working on everything. It doesn't mean we can't apply for the grants and say use for trailhead. The splash pad is.
At this point, you're looking for a conceptual master plan, and then basically segmenting that down into smaller projects.
Right. Thank you, Steve. I don't know, I'm having such a hard time articulating this.
You gotta have something to show them, don't, you can't show them what you're gonna do.
Yeah, yeah.
Dick Altman, by taking over, he just retired. And, or by no Dick Altman, his parents, Bud, and I forget.
His dad has an amazing story.
So, you know, he just retired, he's a lawyer, so he's got compassion for. So that's, that just happened a couple days ago, right, that he agreed to?
Right, Friday, and then we're meeting Thursday, and his asset has a caveat too. They never know if they're gonna move or sell, or, but he's willing to hear us out and get us on the, on the right path. The Wellfield Trail that we spoke about earlier, Jennifer Doctor is a trail enthusiast and a distance runner, and she's gonna kinda spearhead that project from my understanding. I think, Taylor, what we need to do is get with the foundation, get our trail committee together, and and then once again, I don't wanna put on you, I mean, if somebody wants to do it, we do need a liaison to, I assumed.
A lot of exciting things happening.
That's what I want, that's what the point is, is I want everybody to be excited about it and.
And you started it just tonight. Tell everybody what we need, so, good job.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
On that topic, I guess on park topics, I know we had spoke briefly last week about the Wellfield property currently. Wanted, I guess, to get your guys' thoughts on basically designating that as a, as parkland for the community, more like a nature, and basically allowing that to stay as a, call it a nature, nature-style park in lieu of a hayfield.
Can we do that? I know with the, with the drawings that were provided to us with the layout of the, of the three different areas for Wellfield and distances, we have to stay from different things. Can we do that and still get grant money for anything we wanna do well, water-wise?
I would think so. I guess I, and this is.
I mean, that would be my only.
My question, because I guess we have, we have wellheads in our current park. And it's, you know, they occupy a.
That's many moons ago that.
Correct, correct. And that's where, I don't know, I guess I wanted to get your guys' thoughts on basically designating that. I mean, it's really a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the village to have that sort of ground that's designated as a park.
Corey's been involved in the decision, so he knows where the wells are. So I didn't want him to map it out, oh, you can't have it here. So I've been pushing hard, he needs to be involved.
Yeah, so, but we need to have a water sewer meeting to take care of some things with water, and during that, we can find somebody that might be able to tell us an answer to what we're talking about.
I guess what are your guys' thoughts generally on moving in that direction?
Can't farm it, so just gonna have to mow it.
You can't fertilize or anything, so.
Well, technically, because technically that applies our ordinances against weeds and stuff would apply to that property, right? As it sits. That's, yeah, I'm just kinda curious on what everybody's thoughts were.
Well, there had been talk that the only thing that was going to get mowed was around each fenced-in area. We're not fencing in the entire area, we're only fencing in where the wellhead is set. And there had been talk that just that would get mowed, because you're already gonna have a road going into that. Can't say I agree with it, but I think it should all be mowed, or at least maybe not cleared back, but.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is I'd like to have a plan for the property instead of just it being a nuisance that needs mowed all the time. You know, is it a, is it more park ground? Is it, you know, do we move that direction or do we figure out another use?
Well, I think if we can find somebody to answer that question for us, you know, can we still get grant money for water if it's a park? And I understand your comment that we are there anyhow. But in today's society, I'm sure it's been changed and turned around and backed up a few different times. So I think we should find that out definitely before we say, yeah, let's make it the park.
I'd like to see what our village administrator's vision is.
Sure, sure.
So. We're gonna have a new water treatment lady and new sewer guy.
Lady. Well, it could be a guy, I guess we had a lady that was there before, I guess.
Good discussion, though. Very good. I think everybody's, likes their vision.
No, I'd love to see it happen. I'm excited to see it happen.
Good, I'm glad to hear that, Ron. I was a little nervous coming up here, so.
You did a great job. Thanks for, that was the first step, getting everybody knows what the vision is and see what happens, so.
The next time you come out, we'll set the easel up and you put the big.
Or get a whiteboard back here. So, thanks.
Only if I get a laser pointer. Next time I'll send in Jim Schmidt, he's a salesman.
Okay, so, thanks. Where are we at? Park? Got anything? Police department? Okay. Fiscal officer? Cheryl?
Mine is really short. Fund status report. And the general fund will be lessened by the $700,000 when I transfer it. But it's gonna be two more meetings now. And then if you have a question about the cash summary by fund, it's for the year. And I have one other thing about the pool to say. Pool runs in the red every year, totally. The $2 we get from the little kids to go swimming there is a drop in the bucket, and it makes, if we don't collect it, in my opinion, in my job, it's not gonna make a difference. We don't make enough money to make a difference in the pool area. So if you end up having the pool and the splash pad and all that as one thing, and let it be free, psh, big deal, is all I say. Because it always runs in the red. It's something that we do for the community. So the $2 you get in, you can go away with it. Just my opinion.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Cheryl.
A question for you, I guess, so on that expenditure, so the general fund's gonna drop. How long until that's reimbursed?
September.
Okay, any other questions for Cheryl?
I guess one other question in regards to that. So that puts our capital projects, the money in there is substantial. So that's money for the water tower and the Wellfield?
Yes.
Okay.
And they don't add up to enough.
Correct. Well, we don't know yet. We haven't opened the Wellfield, or I mean, the Water Tower.
Yeah, that's this week.
Hopefully, we don't run into the same thing we did with the Wellfield, where the engineer's estimate's not high enough.
Corey already had them look at the numbers and do real-time numbers, so we've gotten a second set of numbers.
Okay.
Okay.
Did we have those last meeting? Did we have those numbers last meeting?
The engineer's estimate, I didn't see it in council in the minutes.
I don't know, we're seeing it either.
Okay.
Okay, my report, got quite a few things to bring up. Mr. Adams came to my office, and you wanna speak about that, what you, or I can just, the class of 1965 Hicksville.
Has a particular interest in the time capsule, because I specifically remember a time capsule associated with our class of 65. Turn 75 this year, we're losing a lot of people. It would be a rotten shame. We're gonna have, we went through a dry spell with COVID, not having any kind of get-together. So even though it's kinda gonna be an oddball year this year, no specific anniversary, it's still significant, because it's 57 years, I mean, that since we graduated, if the numbers work out right. But anyway, punchline is, the time capsule's there. I am very much in favor and would work towards having that opened up. It can be done anonymously. You could pick somebody, and if it has nothing to do with the class of 65, at least know what class it has to do with. Find just enough documentation in there, be it, you know, scribbled notes with the date on it or someone's name. It should be quite identifiable. But if it's shoved off into the future, that future may not exist for a lot of us.
I agree 100%. He came into my office, and I said, I just can't say, yeah, let's do it. I wanna bring it to council.
If it stays in that wall too long, nobody's gonna know anything that it says in there.
So, you know, if there can, you could even mention in the Tribune that, hey, this is gonna occur, or you can keep on the QT and, and just do it and, and make that determination, and then let the class president or the people, you know, in charge, let them make the decision as to when they want to open it. But if it's class of 65, I think it needs to be open.
Okay, thoughts?
What was wrote on the outside of that time capsule, anything? So they found a time capsule in the wall, I know you're new.
It's a box, like this.
When they were redoing the door, they found one in the, in the wall.
The plaque. They had to move it, put the new door in, and it's all copper, like all soldered.
It's all soldered.
And I thought the council decided back then.
No, it was. We did say to put it back in the wall.
So I think we should find us a good tinsmithy, which, for that, you're gonna, because it's soldered shut. And for that, you're gonna have to find this figure-out shop that's doing a lot of really nice tinsmithing, and get them to open it. Get them to take pictures or whatever. Put it back together, don't have it soldered shut, but put it back together. And let somebody know what its contents are, and then you can disperse that to people that need to know and only people that need to know. And you can go from there. If you open it up and it's just a bunch of silly stuff, that, you know, we got a new fire truck, there's a picture of it this year, and stuff like that, eh.
So you wanna give them permission to open it?
I was in favor of opening it back then.
And I suggested you take it to like the shop down there, a power hacksaw, if it's just copper, they can do a lovely job, but I don't wanna be responsible. Yeah, I mean, I want somebody to do it right, and, you know, a bench hacksaw, power-driven, it should just be minutes, and then, but no torch.
Okay, wishes are to do that? Any opposition at all?
I just, I mean, I don't know who it belongs to. I just, I mean, I don't know who it belongs to.
Nobody tests it.
I claim ownership until it's proven up. I was there, I mean, I remember a time capsule, and I, I, and when I saw that in the Tribune, I put it on our Facebook page saying, hey, does anyone else remember this time capsule? Well, we're all old, but I remember the insignificant things. The important things, like my kid's name, forget it.
It's like shredding his cat right now, right?
Okay, so, everybody okay?
Hire somebody to open it.
You could have, like, Caleb Savage out of the machine shop, or, you know, Scott Conley or somebody.
I'll make sure it happens.
Open her up.
Thank you.
Another thing I wanna report, we have a special person in this town is Johnny Davis. He's the son of John and Cheryl Davis. He was in Orlando, Florida, a week ago, Special Olympics, Indiana softball team. And out of twenty teams around the world, his Indiana team came in first, so he's got a gold medal. So hats off to Johnny.
Yeah, congratulations.
They can bring fire trucks and stuff for him, that's cool.
Well, I went and talked to him and wanted, you know, come up here, and they, and I said, well, at least announce it, so. So, if everybody knows Johnny, he's, so anyway, special, I think his dad will help coach John. So they were down there for a week, and there was a team out of Texas they thought would win it, well, Team Indiana beat them, so everybody was kinda shocked, so. June the twenty-third is the next Huber Concert Series, that's this Thursday, Bring a Chair from seven to nine. Cameron Davies, D-A-B-I-E-S, from Brian, it's a one-man show. So tell your neighbors, bring your chairs. Let's see, Day in the Park is this weekend, thanks to the Corey Wan family. And I wish everybody a safe and happy Fourth of July, this is year two forty-six, since the seventeen seventy-six. So we live in a great country, because, like her grandfather, suffered a lot, and so we have a lot of freedoms. But anyway, hope everybody has a happy and safe Fourth. Our next council meeting will be July fifth, the day after the Fourth on Monday, so. Anything else needs to be brought before this council? Yes, Steve?
Just backtracking just a little bit on your report, and the K-9 unit, and I understand one-hundred percent it's terribly expensive. But I was just hoping that maybe it don't fall too far through the cracks, and we still keep it on our radar just a little bit, that maybe it'd be, that we could have a K-9 unit here in the village, which would, I think, would be tremendously, tremendous asset.
Right, that was actually not the number-one reason that it, it was put on hold.
Okay, all right.
But it's good to know that, that that's an interest in the community.
Yeah, I, so it doesn't fall too far.
Yeah, I think that's still, Chief Dennings, that was one of his five-year goals. He is creeping up, I think, this, end of this year will be his fourth year, so, you know, he still kinda has a year. But he put it on hold for a couple reasons, but I think that's definitely a goal of his.
Good, I've talked to Chief about it a couple times.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, anybody else needs to be brought before this council? Lots of great things going on, hang on, right? Hang on, okay?
I like one to adjourn.
Second, roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Klepper?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Adrian, thanks, everybody.